Want me to order 703 and start with the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it assistance forum? Linda, anybody with blue card?
No.
No, alright, next up, we have the, uh, hey. Yeah, consent agenda. All items only consent agenda considered to be self-explanatory will be acted by one motion. There's no second, especially items must be dealt to them with requests and items to be removed from the consent agenda. Do they have any questions on the consent agenda? Nope. By a motion, was that a motion here? I have three coughs, do I have a, is that a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The second.
Second by Clint, Paul is in favor. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, the first thing up is consideration of the financial responsibility ordinance. Alright, so if you recall last time, we talked about this. The issue that we were discussing was the attorney. But before we get there, I'd like to look at page six of this ordinance. Clint, if you could hold that up. So I think we have, uh, so what, so when we did this ordinance, one of the things what we were trying to do is we were trying to make it so that the mayor had certain authority, they could do things without coming to council, because you have to be able to, if there's a leak or, you have to be able to have certain things without coming one day a month. You can't wait for a month. So we put in a sunset provision here, which basically the intent was that if there's a new mayor that comes in, you don't want to just give them unlimited, give them the keys. We don't know you, you're the new mayor. So the city council would then be able to say, you know what, you're new, we want you to only spend $5,000 before you come to us. Or they could say, you know, you could spend 20, anything, but basically it lets the council reset, if there's a new mayor, to say, what are we comfortable with letting you do? Because you're pre-authorizing certain things. You're saying, you're allowed to do this, we're telling you, you're okay. So the original intent of that sunset was that your authorities here go away unless the council votes to keep it going, if there's a new mayor, okay? But if you read that, what that basically does is the opposite. We worded it wrong. So what that says is, unless extended by a vote of the town council, the authorizations under the preceding section expire if there's a new mayor. That means the new mayor isn't governed by any of that. So there is no limit on the new mayor. You know what I'm saying? Like this says, the mayor can only spend up to 10. Well, if you delete that, doesn't make them spend anything? You took it. So we need to reword that to kind of say, unless extended, unless extended by a vote of the town council, like any spending authority, or the mayor has no spending authority. You know what I'm saying? There has to be something to say. And I'm searching for the right word. Does everybody understand the problem with this?
Yes.
Like before it says, I can sign a contract up to what year and length, well, if you take that away, that means the new mayor can sign any contract.
He either have to rewrite, rewrite section 1.2 or rewrite 1.3.
You know, so, um, so one thing is just to delete 1.3 altogether, because the council can always amend this ordinance if the new mayor came in. Now, it still applies to the new mayor. And then once the, you can always say, look, we're uncomfortable with you, we're going to amend this ordinance to do whatever.
Yeah, why do we need a sunset provision if we're going to limit the mayor, one mayor, why not the next one? Why would it be here?
Well, the original intent was that we wanted to evaluate, the city council would have the opportunity to see who the new mayor is. And you got, so like, a chance to say, so I know if the new mayor came in, the new mayor couldn't immediately say, I'm running on a platform of, you know, we're going to spend $100,000 on, you know, in this first month, then he spends $100,000 on a new mailbox facility. And he says, look, I can do that, there's no word that says I can't do it.
So if we do away with 1.3, then they're going to be limited to the $10,000 and the $60,000?
That's right. And if you, and if the city council said, you know, once the new mayor is there, that's too much, you're on, you could always then, as a council, change it.
You, you, you as the mayor can't do that now, so why would a new mayor be able to do that?
To do what?
Go in and spend $100,000 on something.
Well, the way that's written right now, right is right now, I'm willing to only 10,000.
But it was less before.
But if you're the new mayor.
Before this, it was less, that's why this was written to 10,000?
No, there was no written before, it was just a single check.
Okay.
So, so the issue is where people wrote a series of checks, that the total was much bigger, so.
The intent was to take it to zero as soon as the mayor changes and force the council to modify it.
Exactly. Its original intent was exactly that.
But it's not murder right, is it?
Yeah, you had no authority when you were the new mayor, this council had to then say, what are we comfortable with?
But do we want to lower it to zero?
No, well, I think, no, just delete 1.3 altogether.
So we delete that, the next mayor's leaving.
Just delete it. So the new mayor, sign what is now, and you can, you can do whatever you want, once you find out that it is.
Yeah, they have the power to change it, the council does.
Correct.
To amend it, yeah.
Yeah, the sunset provision actually gives them more power, so.
It inadvertently does the opposite.
Yeah, that was.
So, so, we're going to delete 1.3. Okay, so that's deleted. So when we, so the only other issue that we, that we brought up was this issue about tasking the town attorney, remember we talked about that? Some sort of controls to, to, so what I added here was that, that number two, 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 two? The other two.
The third.
Your two twos.
Yeah, the second two. So I came up, I just said, okay, basically it's entaxed as five billable hours, and five billable hours is roughly $1,000. Okay, roughly $1,000, five billable hours. Then you need approval of the signers. Now, I, we're not out here to go to six decimal places, but, you know, so if you're talking to Andy and you're asking him something and, you know, because Andy's going to see this too. So part of Andy's job would be to say, look, I can do that, but, you know, it's going to be, you know, I think it's going to be more than a five. So Andy's involved too, but it's just a number, because we wanted to do a little bit better, you know, deep than just a task. And it can be any number you want. Five, the reason why, like, again, five was just roughly a grand. We pay Andy about $180 plus some overhead, five hours is about $1,000.
Five hours is a pretty good limit too, as far as two or three phone calls, or, I mean, it's not like you're, you're on the phone and it's like, you know, six minutes and, ah, you know, hang up the phone real quick, I mean, you're, that's a nice.
Yes, we didn't want it to happen where you get one call, and if he doesn't answer, you know, he's not allowed to call you back, or, you know. So it's a moving target, but this was my stab at it. Does that seem like a reasonable?
How many council members are approved to sign checks?
There are two, plus me. And the reason why is because, like Linda's check and Summer's check, she can't sign. So there has to be two other people, and if one of us are traveling, it can't be just two of us, because, you know, if I'm out of town, so we've always had to do it. Three council members.
So two council, the five? Wait, three council members or? Two council members and the mayor?
Two and the mayor.
Two.
I'm sorry.
I'm okay with the five billable hours, but why can't that, instead of going to the mayors and the two authorized to sign checks, why don't we just have a meeting with the council?
The majority vote of the council is what you're saying, as opposed to?
Yes, because why would you, I mean, if you're having a talk, in my mind, I'm thinking, if you're having a talk with the attorney for more than five hours, maybe we should get all involved in that, maybe we should all understand, well, what's going on here?
Oh, I think, I think we're, I think the rationale behind it was to put a little less restriction on it. To get a hold of two assigned authorities is easier than getting everybody in room.
But if you're having a discussion for more than five hours with an attorney, I would think that, I don't know, to me, it's not, to, and then to me, it sounds like it's not a simple matter, maybe we all should have knowledge of that.
I don't disagree. My intention of that was that the council, you can always wait for a council meeting. But suppose, you know, we meet one day a month, and sometimes we don't meet in a month, right? We might not meet, let's say, December, now you gotta wait till June. You don't know what might come up, so there's a, kind of, there's a quick path. And then there's always, you can always wait till a council meeting, and always do it then, but what if you don't want to wait? Something's come up and you say, you know, I'm really, you know, we want to do something on the playground and, and, you know, I'm not sure if we can, you know, tie onto the guy's fence next door, who knows? Or you say, you know, we really want to get some clarity on this, rather than, because what are you going to do? You're going to wait till the next meeting.
Well, that can't be a five hour conversation either.
Well, no, but I'm using that as an example, but no worries, if you, if you have to wait, you can always wait till the next council meeting, but then the next council meeting is going to be, yes, you can do it, well, you know, now you gotta get a hold of Andy. You know what I mean? It's just, it's a longer delay.
Yeah.
So this is actually less restrictive. Like, this is easier than making you wait for, but if you want to make it harder.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go, we can make it more restrictive, the ideal was to put some boundaries on it, but not over restricted.
What's the reason for council members, the ones that can only sign checks, as opposed to two or three council members approving it, versus the people that can sign checks?
Because you get into core issues. Let's say I want to do that, I go to you and Daryl, and you say, no, I don't think so, and then I go to Ed and Clint, I mean, I just violated the core issues.
Well, the fact that.
So it has to be two specific council members that have that, so it'll be them or not? I mean, it'll be those two agreeing to do it?
Well, because if you just said, because what if you're facing no? If you go to anybody else, you violated the core issue there. And the other reason was, if you just hadn't picked council members, legally, the check signers are required, they're legally for the financial right.
It makes sense if you're going to pick two for it to be.
Because it was not cost control, right? It's not maintain, so they're going to sign, you know, the check to pay Andy. It just, for lack of, we could say, you know, it could get anybody, but, you know, logically, that seemed like a good starting point.
And you're saying that if I was to go to Liz and Ed, Liz and Ed and say, I want to do this, and they said no, and then I went to Clint and Serena, I have violated it because I talked to four council?
That's correct. You, you, and it's a city issue presumably.
We already have much choice there now. You can't just let Andy to the members.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless, unless you do it during a council meeting.
Yeah.
Or unless you, unless you ask for a special council meeting too, and as long as you have that, you don't notice. But, I mean, since I've been on council, I have, I have not called Andy or his office. When I've had to research something, I use resources that are free of charge, TML or, you know, other colleagues, other city council people, you know, just.
Yeah, see, this probably is not being used a whole lot.
It has, and to me, in my mind, if you're having to call Andy and spending more than five hours, then, you know, what are we talking about here? It must be pretty important that you're spending that much time.
Is five hours the wrong number then? Maybe the constraint isn't actually having two council member.
Well, five hours is fine, I'm just saying that maybe the rest of us should be included in, in what's going on, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it could be that some of these things that we have to talk, and, and I'm new to council, so I don't know if these things happen, but they may be fairly mundane things, but they just need to get done pretty quickly, right? I mean, they're not contentious issues necessarily, so we need some way to be able to get a legal agreement.
I think, to your point, Liz, I think it's, it's implied, I mean, this is a financial control, right? It's implied that we're going to be professional, and we're going, at the next meeting, or whatever the right form is, executive session, open session, whatever, the, it's, whatever, whatever's on the, on that person's mind, or whatever they're working on, is going to come out in those meetings, right?
Well, that's where it's going. Shouldn't also then say, let's say, for example, you know, you can require the approval of these and shall be disclosed at the next council meeting?
That's great, that'd be great.
So that way you have the best of both worlds, you can get on it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a compromise, yes.
You know, so, accomplish both things, you're not held up, you can be held up if you want. But if you need to move, okay, so, that would say, so I mean, so what it'd say is, same thing there, and,
expense must.
No, and the, 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 what's it say? Like, and council shall be, shall be.
Be informed for a meeting about the expense and what it was about.
Well, council shall be informed, might, might not necessarily be able to. Yeah, here, it might be a, oh, okay. We just say, the council shall be informed. Okay. Okay?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, so you know what the comments on anything else?
I don't know if you need to spell that out, but I want to clarify that if, if you have to be one of the, you have to be one, if you wanted to go to Andy, you can't talk to Ed and Clint, because that's three. It's going to have to be the mayor and one of the council members that's authorized to sign.
Oh, in other words, it can't be the two fiduciary council members, or signer of council members.
Oh, because you're the third one, that's a form. Yep.
Well, we know that. Okay, we are.
Instead of, or are you saying Andy or?
Well, so.
One of two?
No, we just, we don't have four of them. Let's just, let's leave it on ourselves to not do that.
Well, should it say the mayor and at least in one check signer? Because it can't be, like, what you're saying is, it can't be two council members.
And the, no, the, putting the word the.
So you need the mayor and one of the check signers, you need both.
One of the, two, there you go.
Oh, is it, there you go.
Is that what you're saying? You need both, the mayor and the?
Or just come to the council, or, if you want to expedite it. Alright, if you want to wait till the council meeting, you want to jump on it, that's what it takes.
Can it just be one of the check signers, or it has to be you and a check signer?
No, you want to have two people.
Okay, so that needs to say and instead of or, right? Between mayor and given?
Yeah, after the word. Yep. Beautiful, okay, correct, good call. Okay. Alright? Alright, we've already gone through the rest of it. The only other edit was, the only other edit was there was one section was repeated, it was here twice. Alright, so everybody happy to have a motion? Ready? Liz, okay?
A motion to amend the.
Approve, just approve it as an.
Approve the, what is this called? The financial responsibility.
It's the company that took financial control of the body, you know, have it.
Or.
It's a financial. Financial controls is amended.
Okay, I have a motion.
I second.
I love his words. Tongue-tied motion is here, okay. Let's get to something easy. Alright, next up, we have the outdoor lighting orders. This is a, this is a discussion only item. This is, you know, a draft. And let me caution the council members, let me just get, it's a pretty big ordinance, there's lots to move in part, tonight is just an overview. So don't get hung up on a paragraph somewhere, you gotta take the whole thing in context and all, you gotta kind of get up to the whole thing to get a feel for individual pieces, so. Ed, Ed spent a lot of time, what, about a year on this?
Yeah, about a year. I was thinking about that, but, well, as far as following Mark's thought there, what I'd like to do is just to give you a lot of background and why, why we've done it, and answer certainly any questions you have at this point, without really going line by line through the, the whole ordinance. The thing that I will encourage you to do is, when you have an opportunity to review it again after the discussion tonight, is to really focus in a lot on the definitions. And others, three pages of definitions, and that will certainly help you understand the, the details of the, of the ordinance itself. But we started this about a year ago, and really the, the purpose of the ordinance, you know, we don't, we don't have enough outdoor lighting ordinance. And everyone is aware that the potential for further development in undeveloped areas of the, within the city limits exists, and we've had a lot of those discussions with different developers and so on and so forth. So we became concerned about the fact that if one or more of those developments came to pass, then we would be at a disadvantage in terms of knowing what we would want in terms of outdoor lighting. So that was the primary driver, and then we got to thinking about the, trying to also accomplish another task or goal, and that was to meet the requirements of the International Dark Skies Association's requirements to gain their seal of dark skies for the, for the city. We thought that that would be really kind of a crown in our, a feather in our cap, if you will, because no other city within the metroplex has that designation. And so those were the two primary drivers for the, for the ordinance. I will tell you that in writing this ordinance, I have referred to at least a dozen, or possibly even more than that, of ordinances that exist today, have been, you know, approved by IDA as well as by the town, the city's councils as well. And there's a common theme, and so I pulled some things from a number of those different ordinances that I thought would work for, for Lakeville Village. I will also tell you that during the process of writing this, I have been in contact with the International Dark Sky Organization in, in Arizona, and they've had an opportunity to review it, provide suggestions and comments and that type of thing, and so I have incorporated some of those suggestions. At the same time, I will tell you that their requirement for gaining the designation does require about a half a dozen or so specific requirements that have also obviously been incorporated into this. And when we get to the point of going through those, or I can share them with you now, I can tell you specifically what those requirements are, so. So the, the ordinance really addresses both private and public lighting. It addresses my home, and if your homes are like mine, which I suspect they probably are, they probably currently don't meet the requirements that are laid down here as far as the lumen limitations. So everybody understand what, what lumens means?
A measure of product intensity?
Yeah, basically that's what it is. So, for example, a hundred, a hundred watt bulb is about 1,600 lumens. And I, I don't purchase light bulbs in the family, that's somebody my wife does, but I think in today's packaging, the lumens are listed on pretty much all of the receptacle, the light luminaires packaging. 75 watt bulb is about 1,100, and 60 watt bulb, which is about 800. So, obviously what, what we're trying to accomplish here is to provide a standard for outdoor lighting, again, both from a public and a private perspective. And I've included in the ordinance a timeframe or a timeline for both the city as well as all of our residents to get to the standards that are outlined in the ordinance. It's not tomorrow, I believe it's probably more like a five-year timeframe, I don't remember, a 10-year timeframe. Okay, so we're trying to give people an opportunity to have plenty of time to, you know, make, make that, make that adjustment. So as far as background, I mean, that, that is pretty much, I think, the highlights of what I wanted to share. The ordinance itself is broken down into, what, about nine or 10 sections, I believe. The first of which is, you know, the definitions, the second of which is more general. The third talks to existing light fixtures, the fourth, general outdoor lighting, and then outdoor signs, and then public street lighting, public right-of-way lighting, and then any requirements for new outdoor facilities is also spelled out. So, that's pretty much kind of an overview, I think, of what I wanted to share, without going through anything. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so Clint, could you go back to page six? I think this is really important. So on page six, there you go. So I, I think Ed, being the math major, that he was, I think those, those inequalities are all backwards. So if it's greater than 1,500, if it's greater than 1,500 lumens, need to shield it, you can't point it up at the sky. If it's between 800 and, and 1,500, partial, anything less than 800 lumens, you don't have to do anything. So you can shine your flashlight up at the sky all you want, you're not reflecting it off the stars. And I think that's an important part of the ordinance, which you gotta keep, you gotta keep in perspective. You know, you can have, you can have a million lumens, you can shield it. You choose not to shield it, then you can't have a beacon in the sky, it's a compromise, it lets you, it's not that it has to be dark. It's not that, you know, you just have to, you have degrees of freedom in the playground, so it doesn't say you can't have outdoor lighting.
And along in that line, on the thumb section here, let's see, number H, where it says, outdoor uplighting is prohibited except in cases where a fixture is shielded by a roof overhand. You know, a lot of people out here have the floodlights that sit against your house and shine it up, and usually the eaves, would that be considered the shield?
Yes, yeah, as long as it's not projected above.
As long as they don't aim it wrong and shoot it out.
It's all, so, you know, the usual lightness stuff is already, it doesn't, it's not relevant, because you're already, you're already good to go. So that's why, that's one of my original comments, you gotta kind of read the whole thing in context. So before you get all fired up, you can't have outdoor lighting, wait, timeout, read the whole thing, and it's just a question of what do you got to do, and how do you have to shield it? You can have anything you want.
Yeah, I did read the whole thing, that's just one of the things that's very common out here, and so I was kind of looking for things that people might object to.
Right, and, and because I have that same outdoor lighting, unfortunately mine are protected from the eaves, I've looked at not every house in the, in the, in the town, but most of them, it, it fits that description, where they're protected by the.
I thought you said most of them would have to change.
Well, I'm talking about your porch lights, your lights that are on either side of your broad doors, you know, those types of things, they were probably more likely to be changed because they're, they're not, they're not shielded at all.
Well, how many lumens they are? How many lumens they are?
And how many, lumens is probably not so much the problem as much as the shielding, I think.
No, but I mean, if your, if your spots are 600 lumens, like ours are on the flags, you can point them straight up at the flags, they're not, they're not built apart, you can't shield it, for only 600 lumens.
Yeah, that is true.
Oh, because, yeah, that's not going to reach so much higher. Oh, because, yeah, it's not gonna reach so much high.
Not bouncing off the stars, yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna go very high, yeah.
Since Daryl and I are new, and you started this a year ago, can you kind of fill us in on why this started, or how it came about besides just the... Is it just because the IDA, no other towns do it, so that's kind of why you guys wanted, or why did this start?
Honestly, I'm not sure offhand how long the IDA organization has been in existence. I'm really guess, probably twenty years. But even twenty years ago, the major challenge that cities have is their embedded infrastructure. I mean, you take a town like Frisco, or even Little Elm, for that matter. I mean, they have, you know, their lighting doesn't meet these requirements. Now, if you drive down El Dorado, some of the lighting in Little Elm does meet it, because it's, you know, it's shielded. But if you go over the bridge, where you have the sag lens, where you can actually see the, you know, the luminaire, that's fairly new, but it's not, doesn't meet standards as well. But if you go to major cities like Dallas, for God's sakes, I mean, look at the infrastructure that they have, and the expense that it would cost them to convert. So...
Yeah, I think, you know, the genesis, you know, we were looking at standardizing kind of the light, you know, we had the, you know, the hodgepodge of light. It's one of these things where the more you looked at the issue, you start to say, "Well, let's drill a little deeper." Well, if we're gonna get lights, we look kind. Well, now, if we're getting these lights, well, then why don't we just do this light? And now, we can be the only city in the Metroplex we can put outside. Where are our dark skies, can you, you can see the star? I mean, it's great selling point. No other city can do that. We have no commercial. It's kinda like, the more we drilled into it, it became, well, if it's this much further to get this benefit on the market? And Ed took that and ran with it, and...
So, in order to be that, the residents have to cooperate? It's not just around-town lights that we're setting?
No, it's everything.
It's everywhere.
Everyone in town, even a residential house has to...
But we're not going to lighting police, I mean, we're not...
No, but I mean, like, in order to get that, it has to be that the new houses in the town, everyone has to participate, not just the city light.
Part of being just got an ordinance.
Okay.
Because, you know, they want you to be legit. That's why it's so hard. There's, what, dripping springs and horseshoe bay?
That's it, those are the only two.
Two cities, like in Texas.
Doesn't make you others in the process like we are, but the two that have been approved are just those two. There are also other, other types of locations, if you will, that are in the program, besides communities, which is what we qualify for. There are national parks, and two or three other ones that, you know, I can't think of at the moment, but...
In Chana Rock? In Chana Rock?
In Chana Rock, yeah.
It's very different.
Yeah.
What happens if, after ten years, an owner is non-conforming to this lighting?
They gotta conform.
Well, I think, and I'm not an attorney, but there is in the last section...